Welcome to the 6:00 PM ASD School Board Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM on the dots. Welcome to the boardroom. Present this evening are board members Jacobs, Bellamy, Donnelly, Higgins, Hallman, Lessons, and Wilson. Member Wilson is joining us online today. Right, we've called ourselves to order, conducted a roll call. We'll now engage in our flag salute and land acknowledgement. Student Representative Madison, would you please lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Dinan people of the Cooper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Dinan people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion, and it is with honor and respect that we recognize all indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
Thank you, Madison. And again, welcome, everyone. We want to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. We've completed our call to order, roll call, flag salute, land acknowledgement, and opening statement. We are now at the A3 approval of the agenda. Member Bellamy, do you have a motion?
I do. Mr. Chair, I move to amend the agenda.
Member Bellamy would like to move to approve the agenda first?
Oh, yes, I do that, too, also. I move to approve the agenda before I make my amendment, sorry.
Sounds wise. Made by Member Bellamy, seconded by Member Higgins. It's now before us. Member Bellamy, do you have a subsequent motion?
I do. I move to, I'm sorry. I move to amend the agenda by moving the superintendent's update as item number B3 under reports.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. All right. Any opposition to the amendment to move the superintendent update as item B3? Hearing and seeing none, the agenda is amended. Is there any opposition to the agenda as amended? Hearing, seeing none, we have an amended agenda that's been adopted. Thank you, everyone. And then wait just a second while we get our agenda updated online. Now that our agenda has been amended and approved, we'll begin with reports under B1, our student representative report. Madison, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. So as we know, many of our students are very grateful and happy right now, ending on the school year. It's the end of the school year, so many are just getting out and having a great summer. And most importantly, as in my experience and many others, it's great to be surrounded by such amazing graduates this year and acknowledging their hard work. And right now, we do know that a few of our ASD graduates are actually interning with Lisa Murkowski right now with her internship program, which is really amazing. So a few of our graduates got into that program, which is really prestigious. So really great to recognize them and their hard work in applying for that. But other than that, closing out this school board meeting for the end of the school year tells me that there is even more to come next year, that it's bigger and greater. And I was most excited to be around such accomplished people, my peers, as much as the graduates as well. And I can't wait for my own class and those besides it to do the same. And I think I've been really moved by each other's characters and aspirations of my peers this year. And next year is going to be a really amazing year of learning to be stronger, more perseverant, and especially having such a rough year this year, coming from a stem of issues like the BSA or losing our activities. But our student body is really happy right now to see that we did get at least some type of an increase that could affect our budget a little bit more positively next year. But other than that, I'm happy to be able to serve this next year. I'm excited to take this summer as a break and use it as a learning opportunity then to come over and do even better to represent my peers next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Representative Madison. Are there any questions? Hearing, seeing none, thank you for your report. Are there board conference or committee reports from any of our committee chairs at this point? Member Lessons?
Yeah, I mean, all three committees met. I'll speak just briefly about the Finance Committee. Again, we all met on the 29th. We had three items on our agenda. Let me pull this a little closer. The first was sort of a historic audit. It was a correspondence allotment, and board members received a hard copy like this. But the audit, as well as supporting documents, should be posted to that agenda. At a high level, there were a number of findings with regard to about a total of $5.6 million in reimbursements, as well as requisition requests. And there were a number, the findings included some inconsistent practices in reimbursing educational expenses, some concerns that some curriculum was purchased from religious organizations with student allotment funds. There were instances where reimbursements appeared to the auditors as excessive, and there was some language they shared, which said those reimbursements do not always appear to serve the public's interest, and we did explore that a little bit. The auditor's review revealed that the correspondence schools did not always require the non-consumable materials to be returned to the district when students withdrew from the program. They identified correspondence school purchase request procedures were not always followed, and they also found that there were no clear guidelines to define core course requirements. And each of those findings was addressed in this, so I'm not going to get into the details, but it is a thoughtful document, and it is publicly available. So I appreciate administration cooperation with the board and with the auditors to navigate the delivery of that important audit. We also had a very brief legislative update. It sounds as though we're still waiting for the governor to address the issue of the state's operating budget, which we can expect to hear his decision by the 19th of June, is what we shared in the meeting. And then we talked a little bit about the board's budget timeline for FY27. That's the 26-27 school year. Notably, we talked about the pro forma, which we normally engage with in December in a two-meeting cycle, becoming an information-only item, but having that be accompanied by a separate guidance memo that the board would have to pass. So, and then we also talked about just really opening the floor throughout the fall to ongoing conversations about board members' priorities, concerns, making sure that we have good communication with community members, legislators, throughout the fall. So that was the gist of the finance meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Are there any other board conference or committee reports? Hearing, seeing none, we'll move on to B3, our reordered superintendent report. Dr. Bryant, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. In full candor, I do have a pretty lengthy report today, and I want to take a few moments to walk you through why. So in a normal year under different conditions, we'd probably be using this time to discuss the end of the year and to celebrate the successes of our students and also community that most recently came together to make a step forward towards adequately funding public education. Unfortunately, I'm going to pause on the celebrations for this particular superintendent update, because I have a very important update regarding, something that came to my attention regarding the State Board of Education's annual meeting. And it actually started today, and it concludes tomorrow. So I'm going to start off with the impact, and then I'm going to walk us through exactly how we got here and why ASD is going to take the position that I'll be sharing later today. The bottom line is that the Commissioner's Office, the Commissioner of Education, has made a stunning move yesterday that would result in ASD potentially losing $15 million just weeks before the new fiscal year. This is a situation that doesn't even just impact ASD. This impacts dozens of districts that have municipalities and have the opportunity to receive additional funding from municipalities. And I credit the Anchorage community for consistently showing that they're interested in funding public education. We really see the strength and power of our public schools as a way to make change for the better in our future. Our state depends on it. But, you know, I just made a very, very big assertion that the state has taken action that would result in $15 million being taken from ASD. So I want to talk a little bit about how we got here. So conversation's been happening for years, as far as I'm tracking, about this conversation about whether or not municipalities should be capped in terms of how much funding they provide to districts. This has been a conversation exchange that has taken place, again, for months, and ASD has been proud that we've been a positive partner in those conversations. It's a very nuanced topic, but in good faith, we've been exchanging our position with the state and others to come to some sort of resolution that would ensure that our schools are set up for success. However, the other piece that I'm tracking is that repeatedly, the state has shared that even if these changes were to happen, they would go into effect effective fiscal year '27. So in other words, we would have had over a year to figure this out and to have a transparent, robust public debate on this very technical topic that I will not be going into great detail during these remarks. But the thing that happened that really took me and a lot of stakeholders by surprise is the fact that ASD learned yesterday morning from the state that it actually intends to move forward with an emergency regulation that would make these changes effective essentially immediately. So I want to walk the community through what does an emergency regulation mean? How is this different than the conversation we've been having for years with the state? Let's talk about the term "emergency." An emergency regulation would mean that if the State Board of Education convenes tomorrow and votes to adopt the commissioner's recommendation, essentially, this would go into effect very quickly. In fact, it's the intent of this emergency regulation to be effective FY25. That's the current fiscal year that we're in. And just so the community's tracking, we're less than four weeks away from actually a new fiscal year, and that's where the $15 million impact comes into play for ASD. So in my opinion, this is effectively the commissioner choosing to unilaterally not only just rob ASD of $15 million, but more importantly, we're choosing to evade an opportunity for the public to become engaged in this conversation. So the difference between an emergency regulation and a regular, non-emergency regulation is very important, because if this would have been a regular, a standard regulation, and that's how ASD understood it, in fact, I'm not just making this up, I actually have the receipts from deed that states repeatedly, as recently as November of last year is what I'm tracking, that explicitly states that it was the intent for this to take place FY27. But there is a key difference between an emergency regulation and a non-emergency regulation. The only difference is that we get to keep the public out of the conversations when it's an emergency regulation, because a regular regulation would have meant that the public would have at least 30 days to actually see the full writings of what the commissioner has intended. And frankly, there are a lot of questions that are still unanswered even today in terms of, you know, what would be allowed to be collected from the municipality, what would not be allowed? And to make a long story short, there are a lot of nuanced conversations that are still unanswered even to this day, even though that we're faced with an emergency regulation that would strip ASD of tens of millions of dollars and also millions of dollars from other districts, too. So with that said, it should be no surprise that municipalities, districts, communities were stunned, and I, as superintendent, am frankly furious, because I feel that the only reason why we would pursue the route of an emergency regulation is to essentially take the public, myself, mayors, concerned assembly members, board members across the state, out of the conversation. So before I acted too hasty, I did take it upon myself to look at the state law on emergency regulations. I actually have a copyright here that I'm willing to share with the media or whoever else is interested. But essentially, what it says is that a state agency must make a written finding, including a statement of facts that constitute the emergency. This is Alaska Statute 4462-250, emergency regulations, for those of you following along to this conversation. And the reasons need to be for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, safety, or the general welfare. So upon reading this statute, it became clear to me that I don't believe an emergency exists, but more importantly, we didn't actually receive a justification from the commissioner as to why was this an emergency. Actually, until about 4:30 today is when I saw a document from the commissioner that states why she perceives this to be an emergency. So, long story short, I did look at that document, too, and so did my attorneys. And before I talk about what I believe to be the best path forward, I want to bring up another complication to this conversation. It's not lost on me that actually last month, it was the governor himself that put together an administrative regulation that actually pauses all new regulations moving forward. He does provide some language to agency heads to pursue an exception. That's spelled out clearly in his administrative regulation, which I also have and am happy to walk us through. But the point is, is that in order for this regulation to even be considered by the State Board of Education, the commissioner would have had to request this from the governor's office in writing. And I'd like to make it crystal clear that superintendents in the community did not see this waiver. There was a document that was put on the record earlier today from the commissioner's office. It's a statement of fact findings for this emergency that she claims it to be. I did do my due diligence, and before this meeting, I had my attorneys review it, and really just to assure myself that we're not mistaken, and I don't believe that we are. I do believe that this situation does not qualify as an emergency. And I also have questions as to where is this waiver that was supposed to be submitted to the governor's office that's spelled out in his administrative order? I haven't seen it. And given the fact that we're talking about taking tens of millions of dollars from school districts, what is so confidential or secretive that it could be shared in writing with the governor's office but not to the superintendents that will be losing, again, tens of millions of dollars as soon as, you know, four weeks from now when the new fiscal year comes into play? And let's not forget that we don't even know what our budget for FY26 is, because the governor is still sitting on the operating budget, and many of us anticipate that he's seriously considering a veto of that appropriation, because he did state that to myself and other of my superintendent colleagues a few weeks ago. So with that said, I do have a couple of other things that I would like to share. But I actually want to direct this message to the State Board of Education, because I want to make a couple things crystal clear. I do believe that the education commissioner's maneuver of making this an emergency regulation is unlawful. I also believe that the State Board of Education, that has members, many of which are very new, they're probably missing key information, because I've not even gotten into the technicalities of the actual issue that we're talking about, which is around the municipalities, revenue, all of that sort of thing. That's actually a very separate issue from what I'm talking about. I'm talking about that there's a lack of justification that's been provided to superintendents and stakeholders about why this is an emergency and the justification for why this merits taking, one, tens of millions of dollars from districts across the state, and, two, robbing the public of an opportunity to even know that this is going on. Because again, if we would have pursued the normal regulatory route, we would have had a month at least to discuss the merits of the technical conversation, but we've bypassed that, and I demand an explanation. So my message to the state board are two things. So, one, my attorneys and I have reviewed this information, and we still believe that the commissioner's attempt to make this an emergency regulation is illegal. It is unlawful, and for that reason, to the State Board of Education, I want this message to you to be crystal clear. I urge you tomorrow morning to consider withdrawing this regulation from your agenda, and let's let an actual public process begin. And I want to be crystal clear, if that is not withdrawn from the State Board of Education agenda tomorrow morning, ASD will be pursuing legal action to ensure that this public conversation takes place. So there's a lot of information that I'm requesting from the state on this matter, and I hope that the State Board of Education can realize that the complexity of this conversation cannot be rushed through in a process that removes the voices of our mayors and assemblies and school board members and superintendents that have a lot to lose, not abstractly speaking in FY27. I mean, within the next four weeks. So if anything, there is a fiscal emergency, but I believe it's been manufactured by the commissioner's office, the Department of Education. And if I'm mistaken, I request that information to be sent to me and all superintendents, as well as the media, tomorrow, because based off of what I've seen today, I don't think that that designation is justified nor lawful. So with that said, I will be testifying, first thing, tomorrow, and I want the public to understand this. So something that school board members and the public can do is to tune in to the State Board of Education meeting tomorrow, and we have a very brief window of time to testify on this issue. I will be testifying to share with them, for me directly, that I do intend to take legal action if something is not done by the end of the day tomorrow, but to also let them know the stakes that are at play and the information that if it's not in front of me as the superintendent, they'll be losing tens of millions of dollars. Does the State Board of Education have this information? Does the governor's office have this information? I'm still not in receipt of the waiver that's actually required in the administrative order to request this even happening in the first place. So there's a lot of questions that I'll be asking over the next 24 hours, but I felt it would be important that I share this with the board, because the bottom line is the biggest pet peeve of mine as superintendent, our attempts by our public officials to keep the voices of the public out of conversations of this magnitude and consequence. And the bottom line is, I will not allow the Anchorage community to be silenced on my watch. So that's why we're moving in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant, for your report. I'm going to open it up to board members for questions or comments. If we could have the emergency, finding of emergency rationale displayed, I think it might be helpful for many other follow-up questions or comments. So we've got that displayed. I'll just add on briefly that I, Dr. Bryant, I appreciate your comments, and I support legal action to the extent that it's required, to compel the state to act in a process that is lawful, and there's, I think there's fair and significant questions as to what's happened thus far. I personally have significant concerns about a public process that is not transparent and being engaged in in a competent manner, and that's disturbing from a department that our young people depend on. Our community deserves better, our students deserve better. The state needs to get its act together quickly. I will say that as a school board member at the local level, I understand the process and the underlying facts of why this determination is attempting to be sought, but I know for a fact that the State Board of Education can't possibly be prepared to discuss this finding in a meaningful way with such short can't possibly be prepared to discuss this finding in a meaningful way with such short notice and with some of their members being relatively new. I plan on joining Dr. Bryant and other board members, I believe, in testimony to ask the board to permanently cast aside any attempt to adopt either an emergency regulation or frankly, a significant revision to the regulation that the commissioner appears to be intending to introduce. It's not to the benefit of Alaska's communities, to our schools, and is frankly unfair. With that said, we'll open it up. I see Member Lessons has a question.
Thanks. I really appreciate beginning with the impact, the timeline, sort of the longer reflection on how we got here and ASD's position. I feel like the one thing I haven't heard, but maybe being invoked in this letter, is why Alaska failed the disparity test in the first place. And to me, that seems interesting and relevant and maybe peculiar because the conversation predates the failure of the disparity test. And now I'm seeing the disparity test being the, maybe the key, a key component of the rationale in this emergency regulation. So can you help talk us through why Alaska failed the disparity test and why that is or isn't relevant?
Sure, Member Lessons, that's an excellent question. So I'd like to hand this off to our Chief Financial Officer. So really, the question is, based off of this emergency declaration that we see before us, is the disparity test issue even remotely related to the issue at hand here? Is it relevant if not, and why, and what's going on?
Sure, thank you. And I'm going to read from the actual letter from the federal government to the state of Alaska that describes why the transportation or the disparity test was not met. It says, "Because the state improperly excluded transfers between each LEA's general fund and its special revenue fund for transportation, and improperly included transfers from the transportation fund to the general fund as revenue, the disparity calculation on which this determination is based removes these transfers." So the feds removed the transfers for them, and then they failed the test. So they were counting some of these transfers as revenue, and some of them weren't. So I guess the feds fixed that for them, and then they failed the test.
Member Lessons, you have a follow-up?
I guess, thank you. Okay, so that was that recent information. But the conversation that Dr. Bryant was talking about regarding should municipalities be capped for what they can contribute really goes back to a longer-term trajectory. So are we fixing anything?
Right. So Mr. Ratliff, would this remedy of an emergency regulation actually address the issue that the federal government has on impact data? Are these two things related?
It doesn't appear to. Like, right now, the state, for at least for transportation funds, the state has a waiver to exclude those from the disparity test calculation from the federal government. It's just the way that they have processed the transfers, which is causing this, which this regulation does not address how inter-fund transfers are recorded or displayed for the disparity test. So really, it kind of gets down to, as they were trying to, they included as some districts that had excess transportation money, it wasn't, certainly wasn't ours. But the transportation money was transferred over to the general fund, and that counted as local revenue or state revenue for the purposes of this calculation. And it shouldn't have, because that transportation revenue, again, should have been excluded. So really, I don't believe that this, the regulations being proposed to limit any excess contributions to transportation or other stuff that is already excluded from that disparity test calculation would have any effect on the reason why they failed the test to begin with.
Thank you, Member Lessons. I see Member Bellamy.
Thank you. I also plan to join the superintendent in opposition to this "emergency," quote, unquote. I guess I have a thought. I think the emergency part of this still confuses me. I mean, I know there is guidance in the statute of what constitutes an emergency. What, I don't see this as an emergency. I see that it's been tied to the department of, to the federal issue. But I don't, what is the emergency as you understand it? Or somebody, help me understand the emergency part of this.
So based off of my reading and the stuff, please correct me if I'm missing key information. She, recently, the state did fail the federal disparity test. But number one, it's not the first time it's happened. And number two, I don't believe the state has actually even attempted to appeal that decision. So to me, on that basis alone, I don't believe that this is an emergency if you've not even tried to resolve this through all channels, including the federal government. So to use that as a justification to rob the public of an opportunity to even understand what's going on before their children lose tens of millions of dollars in services, to me feels, one, unethical, and two, likely not constituting an emergency. But what have I left out, Mr. Ratliff?
I think it's supposed to be an emergency or of safety, health. What does the statute, can you just review what the statute says about emergency regulations?
I don't have that in front of me, but I was going to get to the point.
And I can, I can do that while Andy plays. So again, this is 4462-250, and basically, the agency must have a written finding, including a statement of facts that constitute the emergency. And it needs to be for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, or general welfare. And we did receive the emergency finding from the commissioner. But again, I want to remind the public, I didn't receive that information until 4 o'clock today, literally in the middle of the State Board of Education's meeting. And it remains to be seen when that was actually posted, because it was not posted yesterday. I can tell you that much. So with that said, I believe the justification would be because of the failure of the disparity test. That's the justification to rush this through without public comment. And I guess my question to Mr. Ratliff is, is that an appropriate use of this remedy?
I think the state believes that's an appropriate use. And the why, the reason they did it is an emergency, so they could have it affect in FY '25, which is going to determine the disparity test for, if they can deduct these revenues for FY '27. So the FY '24 test, what actually happened in '24 affects what happens, what the allowable amount we can, or if they can deduct the amount in FY '26. So by making it an emergency, that's the only way they can affect FY '25 at this juncture, because then it has to go through the comment period and wouldn't be in effect until our fiscal year '26, which would then lead to like FY '28 disparity implementation. So there's kind of this two-year lag between what they're testing.
And so, Dr. Bryant, in the best of your information that you have, what constitutes a local contribution? I mean, is that defined in this regulation?
My understanding is that the regulation that's being proposed is very vague. And that actually, I think, is more of a justification for why we need at least 30 days for the public to understand this. This could impact funding for everything from transportation to early childhood services to all sorts of different things. Municipalities offer services to district in many ways. Sometimes it's a school resource officer, sometimes it's various things. And it could mean all of those things, it could mean some of those things. But the problem is, is that if you have mayors, assembly members, school board members, and superintendents that have no idea what the intention of this law is, that's a problem to me.
Yeah. And I think that's probably one of my, I mean, the process is not a public process, is one concern. My other concern is that this really does handicap communities who really want to invest in their, in the education of their children. And, I mean, to tell people, to tell our assembly and our partners that they can no longer do, and we don't, without clear guidance on what this local, the contribution is, I just think it, I just see it as something that's going to really harm our kids.
And if I can add, there are a lot of complexities to how municipal funds are used within districts. And there are ways that other districts may be going about this that I don't necessarily understand the nuances about. And the point is, is why am I to believe that the State Board of Education has enough information to vote on this issue in good faith when my attorneys and myself and others are reading this, and it truly does not, one, does not seem to fit the definition of an emergency, but two, it does seem like we're completing two things that aren't even necessarily related to one another and using this almost as a justification to push through without getting that valuable feedback. And that's my chief grievance of this entire situation.
And I think the impact, my final comment is the impact to urban districts like Anchorage and Juneau and Fairbanks. I mean, they, I look at our, in Anchorage, our assembly has historically stepped up to pick up where the state has not in terms of funding. And if this passes, so I will be urging the State Board of Education to not pass this regulation. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bellamy. We'll go to Member Lessons.
Thank you. So on the screen right now, in the third paragraph, the middle of it, there's a sentence that reads, "The emergency regulations would provide clarification to school districts to ensure compliance." I wonder, and I did find the regulation itself, I sent it to Ms. Sullivan. I wonder whether the ASD administration believes that the regulations provide clarification for our district, or ambiguity? Is, in essence, do we agree that the regulations make the water clearer or murkier?
I don't believe it makes it any clearer for me. And frankly, they redefine the value of in-kind services, which before had specific definitions for insurance utilities, energy audits, and maintenance of facilities. Now it's just a blanket, you have to record the in-kind value of services. Does this mean like when someone who works for the city health department comes and gives a talk to a health class that we have to record that as an in-kind service? We don't know the scope to which we're going to have to go back and try to calculate these things and record them. So no, it doesn't give us, sorry, and if that's going to come out of the actual cash the city can give us, then, you know, we're going to have a lot of trouble and probably need a lot more manpower to track some of these things.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Member Bellamy, I see another question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant to turn.
All right. Thank you for the report, Dr. Bryant, in the spirit of discussion, not seeing any other questions from the superintendent, or the superintendent. We'll move on to our goal monitoring, which relates to reading proficiency, student growth, and grades three map growth. We're now going to have our goal monitoring conversation on the technical report that was given to us at our last meeting. Tonight, our conversation will focus on our early reading proficiency goal 1 and interim goal 1.3, which is the percentage of third-grade students proficient in English, ELA, on the state summative assessment currently, AK* will increase from 32.4 to 46.4 in May of 2028. And the interim goal 1.3, map growth, reading catch-up growth, which is the percentage of grade three students below the 40th percentile in the fall interim adaptive assessment in reading who achieve catch-up growth or better in spring, will increase from 39.8% in '23 to 45% in '28. I want to confirm that all components of the monitoring report are present. The report clearly shows what is being monitored and is focused on a specific interim goal. It shows data for the previous reporting periods, the current reporting period, and targeted reporting periods, and the superintendent's evaluation of performance. With that said, Dr. Bryant, any opening comments before we jump straight into questions?
No, we've received some great questions. Let's dive in.
Perfect. Board members, we'll turn to you. We'll start with Member Lessons.
Great, thank you. I thought this was a really interesting report. And I noodled on it for a number of days. And I really, at the end of the day, it brought me back to being a parent with our youngest child, who was in preschool in the spring of 2020. And that child just finished fourth grade. And we're now talking, so really, we're talking about kids who were in third grade this past year, who were four in the spring of 2020. And to me, that's like, that's like the heart of where we're at. So I'll just sort of begin, what I noticed from the data, starting on slide three, was just that there's this little slight dip. You know, we have the hope for a gentle increase in, you know, the rate of catch-up growth, which is admirable and important, and we want to see that accelerated growth for all of our students. But it went down a little bit, so I said, huh, why is that? Where are we seeing, you know, are we seeing the dips across the, that dip across the board? Or is it amplified in, you know, certain, certain areas among certain students? And when I looked at slides five and six, it's a little bit hard to tell just from this year's data alone. So I pulled up the report we looked at last year. And though these are my observations, and I could have made errors, what I saw was that the largest declines in the percent of students who fell below benchmark, who demonstrated catch-up growth, were among Black and Hispanic students and also among English learner and special education students. So those, to me, are like the high-risk students who, in this report, didn't make the same catch-up growth that other students did or that they did a year ago. That was where I saw the biggest difference. And so I guess I would be interested whether this is something that the administration also saw. And maybe I'll pause there.
Thank you, Member Lessons. First, I'd like to introduce some new people coming up and make sure that they have a chance to introduce themselves.
My name is Claire Pulp, and I'm a Senior Director of the Central Region for Elementary.
Patrick Freeman, Senior Director, Elementary Education, North Region.
Nicole Somerville, Director of Teaching and Learning for Elementary.
Deanna Carroll, Director for Assessment and Evaluation. And I get the privilege of supporting the work that you do by preparing these goal monitoring reports. But I believe that Somerville has a response for you.
So before we get into the specifics of our different groups, I want to make sure we all have an understanding of what this data is showing us and what it's not showing us. So this particular set of data is looking specifically at our students that at the beginning of the year were performing below benchmark, specifically our third graders. So this year's third graders that at the beginning of the school year were below the 40th percentile on their map assessment. So the map assessment is an assessment that typically starts, it's a leveled assessment, so it starts where the student is at. But the lowest level is still going to start at a comprehension. So the students need to read passages, answer comprehension questions about those passages. And then the test is adaptive. It'll get harder, a little bit easier, harder, easier, depending on how the student does on the questions. But it's definitely dealing with language and reading comprehension questions. And then we've looked at those third graders, and we said, of those third graders that are below the 40th percentile at the beginning of the year, how many of them are still with us at the end of the school year? And of those students that are still with us at the end of the school year and took the test again at the end of the school year, what percentage of those students made catch-up growth? So over a year's worth of growth in one school year. So I want to make sure that we're really understanding that, one, this is a small percentage of our third graders, not all of our third graders. And that this is students that were already below, and they may have made growth, but they may have not been able to make catch-up growth, like a full year and a half or a year and a quarter's worth of growth. One of the things we also want to look at is what intervention do we do for students that are behind? And typically, especially with our students who might have ELL concerns or special ed concerns, we do know that those students often have phonics gaps. So they are missing some of their foundational reading skills. They may not be able to blend longer words. They may not know some of those basic reading concepts, letters, sounds, all of those pieces. So the interventions that we put into place often address those issues. And that may not totally translate onto a map test for a year and a half worth of growth for comprehension questions. So they may have made growth in their ability to read and comprehend, but it may not relate exactly to that overall growth. So I want to make sure that we're keeping all those pieces in mind. Not to say that it's not important that these kids also don't need to make catch-up growth. But there's some nuances with this reading and those two assessments that we just want to keep in mind when we're discussing this. And I believe, did you two want to answer anything specifically about those target groups?
Well, I just want to say, to echo Nicole, you know, a lot of those kids are still developing their foundational skills. That's why interventions are needed. They are still learning to read rather than They are still learning to read rather than reading to learn. So a lot of the things that Nicole said is something that we have to do with our interventions early on. So in order to do catch-up growth, that's really critical in order for kids to really perform in the map assessment when they are beginning to take it in the beginning of third grade.
Member Lessons, follow up.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I want to sort of circle back to the, this, after I at least raised the, some reading that I've done to the board's attention. And I shared this with the superintendent and President Jacobs, so they weren't totally surprised. So one of, I ended up spending some time with a report from the Curriculum Associates Group, who produces iReady, dating from May 2024, which identified that students who were in kindergarten and first grade in the fall of 2021, who right now just finished third and fourth grade, were, a year ago, you know, our youngest learners, were failing to recover from those COVID learning losses in the same way, at the same rate, that older students have been recovering, right? There are disparities by grade, really by, you know, when you look at a child's development, right? There may, you know, our youngest learners appear to have been more sensitive to learning disruptions, to lost learning opportunities. And a year ago, Curriculum Associates was seen in their data nationwide that we have a problem with our youngest learners. And so that, to me, you know, is important and concerning. And then I looked a little bit more at some of their citations, and I found a report on, on those young learners dating from August of 2020, looking specifically at preschoolers, right? Thinking about, these are this year's third graders. And just to give you a sense of, you know, this, the long tail of COVID is a conversation that I think has come up again and again in these goal monitoring conversations. And I guess I don't want us to lose sight of that because the interventions are still needed, right? The funding to do the interventions is still needed. And I think that's maybe why I like to bring this up, because we don't have adequate funding, and we certainly don't have intervention-level funding. But in this August of 2020 report by the National Institute of Early Education Research based out of Rutgers, they looked at preschool participation of three- to five-year-olds, sort of in that spring of 2020. And what they found at a nationwide level was that preschool participation fell from about sixty-one percent to eight percent in a matter of, you know, days, weeks, and months. And this meant that the percent of children who listened to stories or engaged in math or science activities daily fell dramatically. And so I really see those formative experiences as being central to where we are right now. And I'm trying to look at this open-eyed, clear-eyed, with compassion, but also a strong sense of urgency. But I wanted to share with the board, this report's sort of warning that the consequences of the pandemic's effects on preschool programs were going to be long-term. They predicted negative long-term consequences for children who would be entering kindergarten in the fall of 2020. That was this year's fourth graders. And they saw the pervasiveness on, of the impacts on learning, early learning activities, which implies that the consequences would be borne most heavily by those who are already disadvantaged, already struggling with significant headwinds. And they said that unless preschools and schools provide compensatory, compensatory services with a strong focus on the most disadvantaged, inequity in educational success will rise, even as the overall average kind of declines, right? So we're, they predicted growing disparities five years ago, which I think we're seeing now in our data. And that's just like the big picture. I mean, that's one survey, it's one report, but I, but I see it here in that little, that little dip on that first slide. I just, I wanted to poke at that a little bit more. I don't know.
Member Lessons, you bring up a good point. I just want to highlight another article from the N W E A. They also had key findings that ASD's data matches and mirrors the national data with that. Basically, post-COVID, the average student will need the equivalent of 4.8 additional months of school to catch up in reading and 4.3 months in math. And what we're seeing is, I know when I attended a great, wonderful Title I conference a year ago, the attendance data also, there was some big gaps after COVID on a national level, and Alaska mirrored that as well. So as far as the cause, you know, it could be many things. And I think you bring up our youngest learners, like Zooming and those fundamental, foundational reading skills. We know that in front of, in a classroom, in front of a teacher, kids needed that. And so, but to Nicole's point, I think with this assessment, it's assessing comprehension. And so some of those gaps are in decoding or blending. And so the M-class and different assessments like that are going to gauge whether they're growing in that. But we just want to validate that, yes, and there's a report from N W E A. It's called Achievement and Growth Post-Pandemic. And that ASD data does mirror that as well.
Member Lessons, any follow-up? All right. We'll go to Member Bellamy.
Thank you. Thank you for your explanation right off the bat, because I didn't miss it, but I, I kind of made it in my head. I made things bigger than what I really wanted to. Having said that, though, you know, I love that we have these conversations, but I also know that people are joining us at different levels. And so, you know, we, we use Science of Reading, we use M T S S, and what, can you just kind of like do a quick recap of, of this, and just in layman terms? So those people who are just joining us for this high-level conversation can understand why we, why we, why we kind of do this and the way that we do it. So I think that would have been kind of my first question. For the benefit of those who may be new to our monitoring conversation, please provide more insight on, on instructional strategies that are being implemented. And along with that, you know, what specific professional learning kind of coaching things are we doing with our teachers? Because we can't change COVID. We know we've got to get those kids through. So I, I really just, I want to know kind of what, what, what are the boots on the ground doing with that third graders?
So Member Bellamy, did you want me to go over kind of the M T S S structure and that first? Or do you want me to talk about what it is we're doing for kids that might be struggling or kind of everything?
Do one and then the other?
Sure.
And then I'll, I'll be quiet for somebody else. Please.
So M T S S is a multi-tiered systems of support. And basically, that means within our schools, we offer supports for students that have varying needs in both academics and behavior. And those supports look different depending on the needs of the child. And so if we're talking specifically about reading, the first thing we do is we need to assess what's going on. And so we do benchmark assessments three times a year for students in all of our elementary schools. For our youngest learners, K through three, we do the M-class assessment, which gets into those foundational skills. And then as we start in third grade and up, we do the map assessment, which then gets into more of those comprehension and language skills. For our English language learners, we have the WEDA, which is assessing their English language learning. So we have a variety of different assessments that we use to see how the students are progressing. One, in their growth, like how they're growing from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, but also then comparing them to the national norm. So how do a variety of students across the nation, you know, also, how are they progressing? So we're, we're looking at all those kind of pieces. And then to determine our core instruction, tier one, which is our baseline, that's what everybody gets. All students at, in the Anchorage School District get, hopefully, their regular grade-level instruction. And then those students that need a little bit more, they might get some more support. It starts out with maybe a little extra time with the teacher, and then it gets what we call our win time or what I need time, where they have a separate small group that's targeting an area of need. Then we look at students, and maybe they need even more than that. And then they might get additional support through E L L, special education, or with another win group, or a reading interventionist, or outside of school, or, or, or whatever we can, we can provide. Summer learning, our reading, air reading for our third graders. All of those are different interventions that we provide that are part of our multi-tiered systems of support.
And that's systemically throughout the district?
That is systemically throughout the district. Now, it might look a little different at each school, depending on the needs of the school, and what kids at each school need what. But we try to make sure that there are supports at every single school to address the needs of all of our students. Schools that have a greater need often have more supports, but maybe not enough. But we do make sure as much as we can to have a variety of supports at all of our schools because we have students with needs at all of our schools. And I'm going to let Patrick talk a little bit about what that might look, look like.
Well, in addition to that, I think we all know that great teachers make the difference. And when we have a great teacher in front of students, that's even huge, that's even more than interventions can provide. And the Anchorage School District is doing its best, the administration, to identify those teachers in order to deliver the best instruction for students. But in regards, Nicole articulated very well our M T S S system throughout the district. What we're trying to do is continue to provide accommodations for kids, not just modifying them. Tier one instruction is very critical for our kids. We're realizing that our kids need more direct tier one instruction rather than always intervening because if our kids get grade-level standards, they're able to, to be able to test, they're able to basically find a way in order to answer the questions and comprehend the questions better on a test rather than just trying to develop their foundational skills. So modifications, a lot of times, allows for students to get a different curriculum and likewise not get grade-level standards. So our job is to always provide accommodations for kids and likewise getting them the tier one instruction they need.
Right, thank you. I'll, I'll pass.
Thank you, Member Bellamy. Member Holloman, any questions for the team at this point? Member Donley, any questions for the team at this point?
No.
All right. Student Representative Madison, any questions for her team regarding this report?
Not at the moment. Am I able to make comment at all?
Absolutely.
All right. I will say, listening in on this, and as a student who grew up taking map tests and STAR tests, I know a lot about what these standardized tests look like, what their questions look like, and how exactly they target the understandings of the student who is taking these tests. And I will say, it, it's very hard to try to determine, you know, how else and what more can we do to keep educating these kids and getting them to higher skills? Because, I mean, at the end of the day, it is a standardized test, and I think we all can recognize that. And besides that, it's still a great thing, because, you know, these types of tests, they help fund our schools. They do provide a scope of understanding of what our students do know. But, I mean, I think, I was looking at the data over here, and I, I do notice a lot of common patterns with how a lot of these students take these tests and the different demographics that take them and how they're impactful. And it seems that like, you know, doesn't matter what the test is, most of these standardized tests themselves just being taken by students, you know, that are economically advantaged, non-economically advantaged, different demographics of race or ethnicity, we seem to see that the most disadvantaged continuously struggle each time. And when we're looking at these different benchmarks that we're trying to track, I think it's really important to keep in mind that, you know, as much as we can keep trying to improve with our students and improve their learning and education, there is still a lot to struggle with in trying to do a lot with a standardized test. You know, it's like the S A T, it's like the A C T. There's a lot of different students that experience different curriculums, different teachers, different learning strategies, and they don't necessarily see that everything turning out the correct way they want to on a standardized test. But nevertheless, these type of growth benchmarks that we're trying to target are great. And it's great for our students because we want classes to improve, we want teachers to improve. And it's a great thing because these skills are important, reading skills are important, you're going to use that when you're older. But I will say that as a student myself and hearing from many students around me, there will always be that impact of it being a standardized test. And that, like, it's, I can hear sometimes you guys talking about how there are struggles trying to understand, like, what more can we do at home, you know? What more can we do with our programs? Because it's very true. There's only so much you can do to help a student. And I recognize your guys' work. It's really amazing because I know that you guys are doing so much to improve these students. But I will say that a lot of the student body does see that, given a standardized test, it can be hard to try and improve as much as we want to see with our skill levels, especially maybe specifically in reading. But still, there is a lot to improve with our kids, and hopefully that can happen.
Thank you for your comments. Member Lessons, floor first.
We have a huge focus, and I think it's rightfully placed on K through three. These kindergartners, they're off to fourth grade next year. Many of them have made that catch-up growth. Many of them are on target, which is fantastic, and others are not. And so, and the same has happened of last year's third graders who finished fourth grade and are going to be starting their last year of elementary school. They, again, were the youngest learners, K one, in the fall of 2021. What happens to them in fourth and fifth grade to support their learning journeys?
So glad you asked. Thank you for your questions, Member Lessons. You know, the power of an excellent teacher. The research, there's some research from trajectory-changing schools that Chris Opas pointed me to the other day. And it's quite inspiring because it's really about being good every day and teachers being prepared every day. And when teachers, this trajectory-changing schools, they, they looked at thirteen hundred schools that turned around. And it really was, nobody was winging it, and everyone was ready to teach, and everybody was using curriculum. And the students who were struggling and the students who were above grade level made growth. And so the three things that this, the key findings of this research were belonging, an emotional climate that activates students' ability to excel, consistency, teachers who are delivering good teaching, and coherence, unified instruction program that everybody is on board with. And so when we talk about interventions, we know those are so important. But at the end of the day, and from my experience, being at a high-need school and a, and a school that was high-performing, the power of a teacher, a good teacher, always any program you can buy, any. And so that's really where the meat is. This research showed thirteen hundred schools, and I'm happy to send that on to Dr. Bryant's office to send on. But it's basically the idea of bringing good to every day is greatness. And so I don't know if anyone else wants to chime in.
Thank you. I would like to say specifically for some of the things that we're doing within ASD is, one of the pieces that Claire mentioned was having that strong curriculum. This is our first year with, this was our first year with C K L A within our fourth and fifth grade, which is a highly rigorous, evidence-based curriculum. For, first year was with K three, and so this past year was our second year for K three, but our first full year for fourth and fifth grade. It is, one, evidence-based, but highly researched and aligned with the science of reading. And so our fourth and fifth graders, for our fifth graders this year, it was their first year in it. And I think a lot of our teachers and our kiddos were like, whoa, this is, this is hard. This is, we're, we're doing Midsummer's Night's Dream, we're reading Don Quixote, we're talking about the Reformation and the Renaissance. And we are talking about the Middle Ages and not just knights and fluffy castles. We're like really getting into the meat of why it all happened. And though, that background knowledge, that understanding, and then applying it to reading and writing and how it all fits together, that's what we're doing. So we're using our great teachers and our belonging with a high-quality instructional materials. We're at ninety-five percent or more of our teachers are using the curriculum and using it the way they're the way they're supposed to be using it. And we're checking on them, we're going in, we're looking, and they're using it. And now, we can get into refining it to that next level. And then, we've added some interventions beyond what we do with our younger kids, but some interventions that are working for our older kids that get beyond the basics of phonics, but into some of those comprehension skills. So we're kind of doing this two-pronged approach of how we can get there, but it takes a little time. And so, we're going on both ends. How can we work with our teachers to make them stronger? How can we work with the curriculum? And then add those pieces and fill those holes.
Can I, just one more?
Member Bellamy.
Just a follow-up. So I hear, in terms of the board allocation of resources, and this was not one of my questions, but it was kind of embedded in it. How do we, what is your... How are we going to get the biggest bang for our buck, I guess, when it comes to our, to the kids? Especially kids who are, who are, have different, I mean, they have different needs. Special ed, Hispanic, Black, all those. How do we, I mean, without targeting, we can't just take a school and give the one school all the money, right?
We're all going to have different answers.
I know.
I'm going to tell you, number one, for me, my preference is we have a high-quality teacher that is a certificated teacher, that is well-trained in every single class,
Absolutely.
Teaching a straight grade level so those kids get a core block of instruction.
So...
But that's, I'm from teaching and learning, so that's my...
But there are accomplished former principals there too. So what would your answer be? I'm just curious. I think I know.
Well, I think, I mean, I don't think I know instructional rigor is critical.
Yes.
So when we go into a classroom, we need to be seeing that in the classroom. That goes back to what Nicole said, is a quality teacher. We have that, we get instructional rigor. A lot of times, we sometimes believe as students are not meeting grade level, we reduce expectations. We do not need to be doing that. We need to continue to have high expectations for our kids. So the combination of that while intervening for our kids that are struggling is going to be the combination for success. And we need to make sure that's still happening in our classrooms on a daily basis.
Not the fault?
Well, I echo all of this. I think a world-class educational environment can be brought to any school, and where parents are involved can be brought to any school. Excellent teachers can be recruited. And I think the sense of belonging and creating an emotional climate where children are scholars and they're going to excel. And I think when you're putting counselors into schools and the PBIS work, that has to be part of the puzzle. But I think ASD is on the right track. And we do have several Title I schools, and we do have several schools who did great on this metric. And so, those celebrations of saying, what are they doing? And so, there is a lot of celebrations within the data that are worth calling out, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Bellamy. Are there any other questions from the board regarding the report? Not seeing any in the room, or I'm sorry, Student Representative Madison, the floor is yours.
Okay. I do also wonder if there are any correlations between attendance and how a lot of these skills show out in these tests? Because I don't think it only applies to like the tests as well, but just, you know, classroom performance, you can probably tell whether a kid is performing well in their classes. Is that going to contribute to, you know, a good score, a good showing or understanding on these tests? And I think at an elementary school level, that could be valid too. So maybe are there any correlations to students who show up to class more and understand the material more?
There certainly is a lot of national research on this particular correlation between attendance and achievement. But we have not currently run that for our group of kiddos to see whether or not, especially for the group of kids that we're talking about that scored below the 40th percentile in the fall and trying to make catch-up growth by the spring. But that's something we could potentially look into if that's something the board wanted to submit as a request for information.
Student Representative Madison, am I hearing your first RFI? I'll give you time to think about it. All right, any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing or seeing none, thank you team so much for the presentation tonight and your work supporting our students. All right. We've completed our goal monitoring, so we'll move on to public comments. Now is the time for us to hear from the public. We welcome your comments, which are very important to us. The board has set aside time at the beginning of each meeting for those who have signed up to give public comment. Please note the following, all public comments are limited to three minutes. The timer is in front of the dais. Speakers will receive a courtesy alert when there are 30 seconds remaining. Speaking time may not be given or shared to others. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name, and direct your comments to the chair and myself. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue. The purpose of this agenda item is for you, the public, to inform the school board about your views. If you have any assistant handouts to share with the school board members, please give them to Executive Assistant, who is seated to my left, Ms. Sullivan. And then finally, I want to call your attention to the detailed boardroom decorum guidelines and expectations that are available at the door. As you enter the boardroom, please review and govern yourselves accordingly. With that said, our first testifier tonight is William Baxter. Welcome, sir. You have three minutes. Please begin when you're ready.
I'm William Baxter. I spend a lot of money on my, what I do, I spend a lot on my stick, on my shirts and on trucks and that. And I've been, and I've spent a lot of money on it. And I've seen, I've gone, I've been, I volunteer a lot of organizations like the Grange, which is an agriculture organization. I've seen them give to FFA and 4H. I've seen the Alaska Farm Bureau do a lot of work donating to the schools, and a lot of money comes from, for the FFA, a lot of thing. And 4H is more, 4H is a different one. But FFA is more for high schools and junior high schools. And I was at a, talking to, I also belong to the Chamber of Commerce, and I was with some people, and I was talking to them. They're the railroad, and they said that they need, they need heavy equipment mechanics really bad. And it's that Mr. Powley needs them. And when you go into FFA, you have different organizations. You have veterinarian, you have heavy equipment and stuff. And it is, I think a lot of times people, and this is what a person told me, FFA guy has had a, had a FFA chapter. He says, being a head of a FFA chapter is like coaching football, basketball, and everything at the same time. I mean, I've seen people in the FFA work really hard. And really personally, I think it's probably the best thing for the school to get, have more FFA programs. And it's just the way I see it. And also, I'm very good at what I do. And I mean, I go, and I'm going to be in the fair, the parades. I mean, I paid, 4H bumper stickers. I probably paid for FFA's, and I got 600 of them. I got 600 FFA stickers, I got 300 4H stickers. I'm going to be out giving in the parades, three of them this summer. So I'm working all, working hard. In FFA, people, when school stops, FFA still continues with kids. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Meridi Latell. Welcome. You have three minutes. Please begin when you're ready.
Esteemed members of the school board and of the community, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of myself and my fellow students. My name is Meridi Latell, and I'm a recent graduate of West Anchorage High School who has gone through the college application process. I think we can all agree that college is expensive. And high schools could help students access opportunities like need-based scholarships, sports and academic scholarships, community scholarships, and student loans. However, during my time at West High School, I was given no advice on any of these routes through my school and received very little support in regards to the college application process. Besides the unit on college essays in my English class, the only advice I was given was a school-wide presentation which briefly went over in-state opportunities. All available scholarships are put into a spreadsheet too large for any person to comb through, and any given student will not be eligible for the vast majority of scholarships in said spreadsheet, if the link is working, which many aren't, starting with the second one on the list. I'd like to briefly tell a story about one of my peers, who I'll leave anonymous. This student was in multiple of my advanced classes, and, while never the top of the class, easily passed all of them and demonstrated exceptional deduction and efficiency skills. This was a gifted student with an A-average GPA, who, because of his job that overlapped with school hours, was not an overachiever in school. This bright student believed he could not get into college. He never took the SATs or applied to a single college. After I showed him the scholarships that the State of Alaska and UAA offer, he told me directly that he would have gone to college had he known he could afford it. This student no longer has the opportunity to continue his advanced education right out of high school due to a lack of information on available opportunities. In addition to this, only one student from the entire class of 2025 at West was accepted to an Ivy League school. Students vying for spots at top colleges are given no advice on what their schedules, test scores, and extracurriculars should look like to gain access to these institutions. I was one of these students. I was waitlisted at both Dartmouth and Colby, meaning I was very, very close to being accepted. Had I received a little help with my scheduling and extracurriculars during my freshman and sophomore years, I firmly believed that I would have had a much better shot at being accepted to these schools. This was the case for many of my peers as well. I in no way blame any individual counselor, teacher, or administrator at my school for this information void. They are working day in and day out to ensure that students pass their classes and graduate high school, and are overworked and underpaid. However, with the raise in the base student allocation, I asked that the school board increase the funding and staffing for counseling departments at schools and place a higher emphasis on the college application process and scholarships, such as through filterable scholarship lists or college prep classes. Our school system should prepare students for life after high school, and currently, we are failing our college-bound students. I firmly believe...
Thank you for your testimony. That concludes our public comments. And those who have signed up to testify tonight, the board will take a five-minute recess All right, we'll call ourselves back to order at 7:29. We are now on our action item and consent agenda calendar. So we'll begin with E, our consent agenda. Is there a board member who wishes to pull an item from our consent agenda? Member Donley?
Memorandum 156.
ASD memorandum number 156, paid lunch price increase. We'll pull that down to make it action item F3.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to amend, I mean, I'm sorry, to approve the consent agenda as amended.
All right. We have a motion from Member Bellamy to approve the consent agenda as amended, seconded by Member Higgins. Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Student Representative Madison?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
President Jacobs?
Yes. We've adopted our consent agenda by a vote of seven to zero. All right, we'll move on to action items under F1. We have ASD memorandum number 158, revision to SB policy, school board policy, board policy 5123, promotion, acceleration, and retention. I am asking for a motion to postpone indefinitely, and I'm happy to speak to that if there is a motion and it's seconded.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move to postpone indefinitely memo number 158, revisions to board policy 5123, promotion, acceleration, retention, and retention, sorry.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Vice President Bellamy, seconded by Member Holloman. As the chair, I'll note that I requested this motion in part because there were concerns expressed from the community, and in looking over the board policy that was driven from a standard revision from the Alaska Association of School Boards, the language change, although a very small portion of the policy appeared to be meaningful to some in our community, I confirmed with the superintendent that there would be little to no operational change in the district, and as such, we have larger and more important priorities, and so we can discuss this at a later date if this board or a future board so chooses. For now, this is not something that we should be spending time on, given the other things we have to navigate.
Agreed.
With that said, is there other discussions on the motion to postpone this item indefinitely, the ASD memorandum number 158? From a procedural standpoint, this would mean it would not be further discussed at this or a future meeting. Okay. Ms. Sullivan, could you please call the roll on the motion to postpone ASD memorandum number 158 indefinitely?
Student Representative Madison?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
President Jacobs?
Yes. ASD memorandum number 158 is postponed indefinitely. Move on to action item number F2, AASB Executive Board nomination. Vice President Bellamy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I move to nominate our school board president Carl Jacobs for the AAASB Executive Board. Actually, this should be for the application process, but even the application has to be approved by the board. And then we'll know whether he gets it by July.
Second.
Motion made by Vice President Bellamy, seconded by Member Holloman. Is there any, Vice President Bellamy, would you like to discuss why we're taking this motion up and what it would do effectively?
Right. This is part of the process for filling our former president's seat on the board. It doesn't just transfer, it has to go through a process, and the process requires board approval before any name is put forward. So it's consistent with what we've done in the past and with the process for the AAASB Executive Board appointments. And this appointment would end, would actually end in November, right? I think, Andy, it would end in November, which means that you would then have to, if you are successful in filling the seat from now until November, then you get to be nominated, you get to continue in the process to fill the seat permanently. So that's how that works. Thank you.
I would be excited to serve, thank you. Are there other comments regarding the nomination, or at least the motion to submit the application for nomination? Member Holloman, thank you.
I would like to say, I just think it's important for the president of the board to be involved with AASB. It's an opportunity to meet other school board members from around the state, as well as just be directly informed about things that are happening in the state by AASB, which has a good staff and I think puts out a lot of good recommendations. As Member Bellamy pointed out, they're not obliged to have two seats from Anchorage. I really think they should, but I would hope they would see fit to select President Jacobs as our representative. I think it'll be very valuable for him and for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Holloman. I appreciate your service on the AASB board. For the record, I want it noted, I tried to convince Member Holloman to stay on three to four different times. All right. Any other discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, Ms. Sullivan, can we have a voice vote?
Student Representative Madison?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
President Jacobs?
Reluctantly, yes. That motion is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. All right. That completes F2. We'll move on to F3, which is ASD memorandum number 156, paid lunch price increase. Is there a motion before we begin a discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve memorandum number 156, paid lunch price increase.
Second.
And I'll just note, it's a recommendation that the administration's recommendation that the school board approve, a 50-cent increase for breakfast and lunch at all levels, which is the purpose of the memorandum. Member Donley, you pulled this item for discussion. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As with past increases, I take the opportunity to oppose them, to sort of symbolically oppose the current structure of how we assess meals, the cost of meals through the district. If you happen to live in a zone where the entire school, all the meals are free at, then you get that benefit whether or not your family's capable of paying or not. And I just don't think that's a fair system. It's what we've got, but I don't think, but in no way is it fair to those who would probably be economically identical in another school zone that doesn't have everybody getting free lunch. It's just not fair. So that's why I have traditionally opposed these.
Thank you, Member Donley. Is there other discussion on ASD memorandum number 156? Member Higgins, the floor is yours.
I'll just make one comment, just for the public to know, that when you've got the vast majority of the school eligible for free and reduced lunches from an administrative standpoint, they've done it for the entire school. It's easier than identifying and recognizing the children going through there, but any child eligible for a free or reduced meal in a school that is not in that group, the Title I group, they're still getting eligibility for it. So I think I view this as an administrative process, and I think it's also less on the children being selected when you got that larger group, and I think that's really what the process is all about. It's, I think it's good for kids, I think it's good for administration, so, but I do appreciate the fact that some kids are benefiting that may not otherwise be eligible or necessary for finances, but there's some good reasons why this is being done, and I support that.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Are there other questions or items for discussion on this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, we'll ask for a voice vote. Ms. Sullivan?
Student Representative Madison?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Donley?
No.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
President Holloman, President Jacobs, my apologies.
Yes. AST memorandum number 156 is adopted by a vote of six to one. Excellent. That will conclude our action items, and because this is the last meeting of this school year, we do not have any non-action items. We've completed our public comments and the superintendent update, so we will go straight to school board and administration comments. I will begin on my left with Member Higgins. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I've got three hours left, don't we? I just want to say, when we're closing this year, I know we've got a lot of people that are leaving the school districts, some retiring. I'll mention Jennifer Newson, of course, she has been a tremendous resource for me as a school board member, and I know additions, but there were so many people out there that have worked so long within the school district and retiring, and it's just a shame we can't find a way to recognize and appreciate them a little bit more for what they've done, because it's a model for other people within that. And so with that, I wish everybody a good summer, and one last comment, I know that I've got one person I know going to summer school with King Tech, and it's amazing to watch how much these kids are excited about what they're providing at that school. They're coming back just ready to build things and do things, and for all the other kids that are getting that benefit, I think it's a great appreciation for what they're doing with the summer school. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Member Lessons, the floor is yours.
I ran into Member Higgins in the park, I didn't run into you in the parking lot, I saw you in the parking lot at King Tech, avoided a collision. It is really a wonderful opportunity for many incoming ninth graders to get exposure to a number of career opportunities, areas of interest, and- And so that's been a lot of fun to talk with my future freshman about her experiences. So thanks to Team ASD for ensuring that hundreds of students are getting that opportunity in this two-week session, and then I think there's another two-week session starting next week. I don't really have many comments I express, I do want to express my gratitude for the superintendent's remarks earlier this evening in the update. It will be a lively and relevant week with tomorrow's State Board meeting, with our conversation with the Assembly on Friday morning, and the retreat over Friday and Saturday afternoons. And I don't have, this is not a resolution, this is not anything other than a reflection. But one of the slides shared in the retention and recruitment slide deck earlier during our work session, you know, one of the solutions from the AEA group was to ensure that, you know, the full curriculum is provided to educators prior to the summer for anything new. And I think that's a really practical solution. You know, I certainly remember that it probably stems in part from a much earlier rollout of the prior English Language Arts materials, which, you know, got off the boat a couple of days before the school started, and that was a struggle. But it does raise the, one of my concerns for next year, which is that the revised Freshman Academy Career Exploration Course is, is in effect, still being created right now. I know that it was introduced to some extent at the ASD Summer Academy. I know staff are working really hard. But my understanding is that it is not done, and it's going to be ironed out more over the summer, which, which means that educators who are going to be tasked with rolling it out are again going to be seeing it really close to the start of the school year. And I think that's going to be a challenge for the same folks who had to deal with a brand-new curriculum at the start of last school year. So if there's a way to expedite that material and get it into educators' hands, that seems helpful. And I would also offer my individual opinion that it could be helpful to enable students to opt into that class rather than make it a mandatory class when it is not a graduation requirement. Just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Member Donley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank the Board for voting to withdraw memorandum 158, which was a proposed revision to the ASD's promotion, acceleration, and retention policy. This originated from the Alaska Association of School Boards' recommendation. And I think it was just factually in error. My research indicated contrary, significant contrary evidence to what the proposal stated. And I'm hoping that the Alaska Association of School Boards will reexamine this issue and, and look at that new evidence and possibly recommend our existing Board policy, which I think is really sound in this area, rather than what they did recommend.
Thank you, Member Donley. Student Representative Madison?
Besides what I already covered earlier, I just want to say thank you for welcoming greatly, welcoming me greatly onto this Board. It's been awesome from what I've seen this year, serving for the term that I've already started. And going into next year, I'm going to be really grateful and thankful to be able to represent in the many ways that I can. And I just wish all of these Board members and all of my peers a great summer, and hopefully a way easier year to deal with, having to do with financial reasons and receiving a high-quality public education.
Thank you, Madison. Move to my right, Member Holloman. The floor is yours.
I would like to echo what Member Lessons had to say, that at some point, we talked earlier in our work session about retention, recruitment. We have to realize at some point it's too late to make some changes for fall. And it all depends on the change, as to when that date is. But there, there should be a limit to what we ask teachers to do in a very short timeframe. And it is concerning that this is the second time where, you know, we asked for the syllabus for the original face class, and I've never seen it. And of course, that class isn't going to be around anymore. But that it's still under construction, and it's, in terms of workdays for teachers, the first day of in-service day is, is the next workday. But, so delivering it now during June and July is asking a lot. And we do ask a lot. And I just think we're going to have to realize sometimes we ask too much. Also like to agree with Member Donley as far as postponing those changes. I do think the ASD language kind of emphasizes that it needs to be an individual decision about each child as to whether or not they're held back, and percentages on whether or not it's a good thing or a bad thing really don't matter much to a particular student, a particular situation. So I think our language doesn't discourage the discussion, and it shouldn't, and it should be made in a meeting with people that know that student by name individually and have worked with them. Lastly, as the superintendent expressed, there's a lot of concern about what the State School Board's being asked to do, and a lot of confusion about why they're being asked to do it in such a short timeframe. And it's coupled with the fact, I think it's pretty invisible to a lot of staff, probably not the staff in this room tonight, but staff out in the schools and the parents, the degree to which the uncertainty about funding affects our operation and consumes resources. And part of this is our fiscal year starts in 27 days. We have no idea what our budget is, actually. We, we have a budget based on a number. We have no idea if that's the actual number the state is going to fund. And normally, we would be a lot further along in the process, but because the potential cuts were so severe, and I do want to emphasize again, funding the BSA as it stood in January, is a 20% cut to education over what we were funded at this year. And so planning for that, I think the administration ran into obstacles that were unpredictable, because it was, it was cutting an already stressed system significantly. As we restored some of that, and again, I think a lot of people don't realize that real planning and implementation for August starts happening in February and March, that those are months where normally a lot of things get done as part of the process of people knowing where they're going to be, what they're going to teach. That got delayed. That adds stress to the workforce. It, it adds stress all around, and reconfiguring a budget over and over again is consumptive and disruptive to the whole organization. So on top of the fact that we're still sitting and waiting to see what a veto might look like and what funds will have, the implementation of these regulations around the disparity test is just another layer for a very significant amount of money that, again, I don't, I don't know how the administration can really function in a meaningful way with that level of uncertainty coming so close to when we start our year. So it's not to always ask for more money, it's not to ask for the moon, but to ask for stability, predictability, letting our staff know in advance what they'll be doing in a reasonable timeframe for them to be ready to come in and succeed, and for our administrators to be able to do things like make schedules and figure out which rooms are going to be used for what, and by who, and which students. It's all more complicated than I think a lot of people see on the surface, and it is being severely disrupted by, by things from all different directions. So kind of a bleak time in a way, which is sad right after graduation, because that's a pretty happy time. And, you know, just trying to move ahead and do the best we can under the circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Holloman. We'll go to Member Bellamy.
Thank you. I just want to wish everybody a happy summer. We have, this year has been horrendous. It has been chaotic, uncertain. We've asked people to do some amazing, but some difficult things. And yet, here we all stand. We're still fighting a good fight. Our kids deserve the best that we can give them. And so for those of you who, please join the superintendent tomorrow to stand up against, in opposition to the, to the State Board of Education Resolution on local contributions. I mean, it's, that's a, that's a gut punch I don't think any of us needed, especially not this time of year or ever. So anyway, just enjoy your summer, staff. You got, we've worked you guys pretty darn hard, and you've, you've not complained not one bit. I thank you for that. And Board members, thank you for all of your guidance and wisdom, and have a month off after the retreat. You have to come to the retreat on Friday and Saturday. And after that, you can take a little bit of a break, and I hope you have an enjoyable time. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bellamy. Member Wilson, any closing comments?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to share that there, please join us this weekend at Clark Middle School as ASD partners with Alaska NAACP to host a Free Education Summit. It's going to be on Saturday, beginning at 3 o'clock, and Sunday at 1 o'clock. And food and childcare will be provided, along with information about how school funding works, special education rights, and family engagement. Also, please save the date for Friday, August 1st, at Begich Middle School, from 11 to 7 for the annual Hugs Back Pack Jam. Please keep an eye out for, on the back-to-school page for more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wilson. I'll echo appreciation for our administration and our Board for getting through a really challenging year. I was talking with Member Bellamy about how our first few meetings were very quiet, very little public engagement, and things couldn't have changed more drastically as the year went on. And so thank you to everyone here in the room, and specifically and additionally, and especially our educators, our support staff, and our building-level leadership that made the amazing things in classroom and classrooms across the municipality of Anchorage possible all year long. With that said, I did want to note that this is the last Board meeting, that one of our dedicated and extremely valuable public servants, George Vakalis, will be attending in his role formally with the District. Mr. Vakalis, please applause. All right. Mr. Vakalis, as far as I understand, began his, his public service with ASD back in 2000. He left unfortunately for some time to go run a city for a while, became a municipal manager amongst other roles, and then returned 10 years ago to work and support districts and school boards for a decade. 19 years with the Anchorage School District is impressive. I am a local government geek, and I watch way too many meetings, but I have no shame in saying that, Mr. Vakalis, you have forgotten more knowledge about local government than I will ever know. So thank you for your service, and we hope you keep in touch and are around when we have a question, because you are the municipality's walking encyclopedia. Thank you, sir. All right. With that said, that completes our business for tonight. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Made by Member Holloman, seconded by Member Bellamy, seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.